Okay. All right. Good evening. Welcome to the August twenty first, two thousand and twenty three. Special meeting of the Board of Estimate and Taxation. Madam Clerk, can we call a little please?
Mayor Elaine. Mister Abrams.
Here.
Mister Constant.
Here.
Mister Gillett.
Here.
Mister Kissimis.
Here.
Miss Yang.
Here.
Three, four, five, five, we have one.
Great, okay. For tonight's meeting, we have one resolution and two associated action requests. Tied to that, can I get a motion to move the resolution and the action items for discussion, please?
So move it.
All right, let the record show that Mary has joined us as well, because evening. Madam Clerk, can I ask you to please read the resume into the reference, please?
Of course. Resolution requesting a special capital appropriation in the amount of two million nine hundred thousand for the Norwalk Public Schools for the acquisition of six properties of budding the proposed South Norwalk School and other project-related purposes.
Thank you. And Alan, I believe you're here to talk on the resolution and the requested.
Yeah, there's a little bit echo going on, so um.
Yeah, I think, yeah, Troy, well, yeah, Troy and yeah.
Sorry, I didn't mean to do that. I'm sorry. So um. Let me just introduce myself, Alan Lowe, on behalf of City of Norwalk, and also tonight with me on my staff is Joanne. So you see her name appear on screen. The request in front of you is for allocation of two point nine million dollars for land acquisition of a budding property to the South Norwalk School Project. Southern law school, yes, you may know, we say in all purchased the Hatch and Bailey property some about a year ago, a month, a year ago now. And the property is about eleven point seven acres. And all along, Joanne, can you do me a favor? Can you just, it's possible you upload the site plan so the commission can take a look at it?
I've got it handy. There it is. Somebody beat me to it.
So what happens is required the property, we have been going through design phases, and we are up to the construction document phase. Since the day one of this project, even though eleven acre, Charles speaking, it's sufficient. But at the same time, the property, the Hatch and Bailey properties have a substantial gray change. From the bottom of the property to the upper top portion is about seventy feet difference in elevation. So the upper portion are probably really inaccessible. So we limited middle portion of property and the lower portion of property. And we load using lower property portion of property for bus drop off and not bus, I'm sorry, parent drop off and parking. As you can see, we are really kind of defined and squeezed into that area that identified drawing. The yellow area are the adjacent properties that the city is seeking to request the to purchase those property and there's one, two, three, four, five property to the left. And one property, which is the old railroad spur line on the right parallel to South Main Street. So as you can see on this drawing, so when even when you try to lay out the site, I mean, it's kind of really awkward in the sense that, you know, we have a driveway going out, but like, it's really not really a driveway. And we are squeezed between different properties. So the purpose of the city's acquisition of these properties to for us for why additional open space as well as provide parking and drop off, improve parking and drop off for the new proposed school. Currently, this proposal is being submitted to us, have been submitted to the plan, it's only commissioned for approval. With understanding that we are looking to seek these additional properties and that the project is going to go out to bid is probably around, I think about six months from now. And start construction in the spring, recognizing that the first, we're going to take, take us about a year and a half to construct, which is the fall of two thousand and twenty five. The same time, it says the city currently has incubation incubating school at the old Columbus School for pre-K and K. So in about two years, those kids will be set for second or third grade, I think it is. So when we open school, they would not be fully occupied at that point. So we only pre-K to third grade. So we still have time to kind of modify the plan to get it to be fully developed for the school purposes. So the money for this, we are recommended that we have residual money from the Jefferson's Construction, Jefferson School Construction Project. We have about three point nine million dollars and recently remove a million dollars into the intersection improvement that's going to give it to the either DPW and and or transportation to do an intersection improvement project. Whether it's traffic and and drainage issues that the existing existing conditions. So we said two point nine million dollars left and we are requesting to move that money. Create a new special appropriation for the acquisition and then use the money, the residual from Jefferson School to fund the acquisition process. Just one other thing I want to add before I stop. The 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 app was the two point, we have complete like completed two appraisals from two separate appraisers. And the two point five million dollars will generally cover the cost of all the acquisition. However, there's still potential of like premium cost that we may be encountered. And so as far as relocation costs and also our current budget does not include it into the construction of these areas. So in the future, I will be coming back for additional money to to for the development of the site. But I think we're doing this one step by time, look to acquire the property and figure out what the timing of everything is and stuff and then and then come back another time and go for another special appropriation or or regular capital budget, depending what the cycle is. So I just want to be full disclosure that the two point five million does not complete the development as well as the relocation costs associated with these properties.
And Alan, just to point it clarity, you mean the two point nine, not two point five, correct?
Two point nine, right?
Thank you. Do we have, do you have any sense at all as to what the additional incremental cost could be that the city would need to cover through either another special appropriation or through a regular capital budget request?
I don't. I'm sorry. You're asking me that question, right?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I don't at this point. I think that the Law Department and I, Darren and I have met with all these property owners, except one of them. We have talked to them. We are very respectful of the people that the property owner owns the property. We're going to work our best to to work out a financial arrangement that works for them for the city. As Jones be, we always call it friendly purchase, I guess, that, you know, it's just a purchase, a purchase, but it's a, you know, it's a straight purchase. But eminent domain is part of our process that choose in our toolbox that we have, but it's not being, we're not using that, say, you know. Unless we have to kind of thing, but our goal is to work something else with property only that that's 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 workable for them and for the city. So the final cost of the acquisition of these properties unknown this time, so I, it's going to be ongoing process. It's going to probably take us a couple of months to work that out. And for those probably that we can work it out, we'll probably we'll go for a common council and get authorization for eminent domain process.
Okay, thank you. Other questions for Alan?
And destroy, can you hear me?
Yes.
Alan, a couple of questions. One is that we're taking money from the Jefferson Project. Is that improvement project complete? The first question. And the second question, if you explain that the eminent domain process, is there still negotiation? Once you determine to use it and then who decides if there is a if there is a dispute or you're at a, you're not able to to come up to an agreement?
Sure, I can go first, first question, first answer. The first question is, we have complete completed Jefferson School Project, this finished about a year ago. So we went through the one year of post-construction warranty period. So we are, we are, we are, we are prima set and we are prepared to submit the reimbursement process of the state. So we are complete. I think after two point nine million, I think we have maybe like thirty or fifty thousand dollars left in the account, just in case there's some miscellaneous stuff, but there is no, there's no additional work that needs to be done on this capital budget account. So we are finished. The second question, I know Mario's here, so I think I saw him before, so he can, I'm sure, like, he can answer those questions a lot better than I could.
Thank you. Good evening, Mario Capola Corporation Council. With regard to the, in response to your question about the, I'll take my, my hand was raised, I'll try to lower that now. With regard to your question about the eminent domain process. If the, at the endpoint of a number of meetings, the common council will presumably take a vote on whether to authorize the city to proceed with acquiring the properties, including by eminent domain. And once that is done, we will continue to engage in good faith negotiations with the property owners to acquire the properties. Once the council has voted, we have six months from the date of that vote to file the paperwork with the court to effectuate the eminent domain taking. So we've already started those good faith negotiations with the property owners. And will continue to do so even after the council takes its vote at some point presumably at one of their meetings in September to engage in those good faith negotiations with the property owners. And then at some point, if we're unable to negotiate a settlement or I should say a price for the property, for the acquisition of the property, for any of the properties, and we'll proceed with filing the paperwork with the court.
And then if it's an impasse, the court decides on the final price?
Ultimately, the court could eventually make that decision. It quite often happens where even if there is the eminent domain filing that there could be further discussions with a property owner to try to reach a consensus on a price, even after the eminent domain paperwork is initially filed with the court.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions?
Um, yes, I have a couple of questions. Number one, who are the owners of the sixteen Meadow Street Extension and the rail corridor?
Um. And the rail corridor?
Yes.
Let me see how they answer this question. Sixteen Meadow Street, it's a, it's a commercial tenant, there's no, a commercial owner. I don't know offhand, I kind of know who it is, but I don't know exactly who it is.
It's not the Hatch and Bailey Group?
No, no, it's not Hatch and Bailey, no. I guess technically, I just didn't want to get talk about the individual too much and publicly. But in that, it's a, it's an empty lot. It's used for commercial truck parking right now. So there's no building on the property.
Okay.
Okay, it's only a property and that's the only property that the property owner hasn't got back to us. All the other property has has come back to us and we sat down with them and have a discussion. And all discussion has been positive in the sense that we understand each other. So it's a, it's a nice conversation. It's not like aggressive or nasty, anything like that. It's been very friendly. And again, the only person that we haven't haven't got a response from is the sixteen Meadow Street Extension. So, yeah, I don't want to again, I don't, I think I know the property owners, but I'm not sure it's under different name and things like that, so I just don't want to.
That's not necessary, just that conversation is fine and the.
And the, and the, I'm sorry, the, the, it used to be a railroad spur line, that's why it's linear like this, that's whole piece of property. The railroad has sold the property to a, to a contractor. They actually operate right now on the top of this, on the top of this yellow piece there. So they are looking to, I think they acquired, they acquired from the railroads for the purpose of I guess they want to sell it off as a pieces because this thing goes all the way up to South Normal Station. So it's, it's a, it's a many sections to this, maybe four blocks or so, four, five blocks. So I think, I think they bought it from the railroad for the purpose of resale. But but just because very linear, it's really doesn't really comply zoning regulation in terms of building and things like that, so. So we are talking to them directly, to the property owner.
Because, so in the two point nine million purchase price, I looked up on the tax assessor website. And the four properties which are residences total to about one point four million. So that leaves about one point five, oh, in terms of assessment. I was curious as to what kind of purchase price were you were looking for for the Meadow Street and the South now main rail corridor. And then on the Oxford Street properties, are those being purchased at a significant premium to their assessed value?
I still want to say that because these are real estate negotiations, so I, and this is a public hearing, so I want to just keep it as such general as possible. We have, as I mentioned before, we had completed from two separate assessor, independent assessors. So we got assessed value for all of these properties. So again, it came out, it came in, it's not exact number here, but it's somewhere around that range, that's why we're asking for it. So I don't know whether the tax assessors' numbers, in fact, I don't, I'm not even sure the railroad actually, property is actually identify a separate lot because I don't think that district block and lot number, because railroad in the old days, there's no tax district block and lot numbers. So when they cut it up, and I don't think there's a sign, there's no district block and lot number assigned to that piece. Overall, I think we can say it's a there's two appraisers, so the price is a little different for each appraiser, so just big is between two point five to two point nine million dollars what we're getting. So I don't know the number you're looking at, was it, was it the market value or the assessed value? You should say seventy percent is assessed value of the market.
I was using the appraisal value.
If I could be.
Sure.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. If I could be helpful. With regard to, I mean, generally, it's a good starting point for comparison to look at what the assessor has as values on properties. In this case, it's, it's, it's less, it's less relevant just because of the time period for our revaluation. So the city's citywide revaluation took place on October one, two thousand and eighteen. So the values that you're looking at are based on market value derived as of October one, two thousand and eighteen. Based on the physical condition of the property as of the last grand listing. So yeah, the market has changed drastically for residential properties in throughout the country, certainly throughout Connecticut, and most importantly throughout in lower Fairfield County and Norwalk. Property values have gone up significantly from October one, two thousand and eighteen to the present, about five years later. Part, you know, and I think, you know, COVID certainly had an effect on that. You know, Fairfield County has certainly become a more desirable place to be, especially Norwalk, so the the valuations that the assessor has on the properties reflected a market value from five years ago, which is probably fairly different than what it is today, based on current market conditions in comparison to five years ago. With regard to the the request for the two point nine, it's based on where we anticipate. Hopefully, we could acquire the, what we could acquire the properties for, based on initial offers and where we may end up if we're fortunate. And and that's based on appraisals that we received. If we proceed at some point with an eminent domain, it's required by law that we have two appraisals by which we derive value and it's two separate appraisers who independently value the properties without having any communications whatsoever with each other. And then we take the value that we do, the value we use is the value, which is the average of both of their appraisals. So two was done on each of the properties.
I understand. Just one thing, what, what are the anticipated relocation costs and what, what are there? What would be the city's obligation in relocating individual families?
I think it's difficult to know the full scope of those expenses at this time. The sometimes there's also location, relocation cost with regard to a business as well, but with regard to the families, I don't think we've had an opportunity to figure that out yet. You know, it's really done on a case-by-case basis. I think that the city will certainly work with property owners and any occupants of properties to try to provide them with time to relocate as well. I think we do have the benefit of not of being able to provide some time as well after the taking. So I think that part of the relocation costs will be dependent on how much time we can afford people to stay in the properties. So, so there's, there's, there's a whole host of circumstances. I think it's difficult to come up with a a, an estimated number at this time.
Shouldn't relocation costs be just part of the purchase price that you buy the property and or is there something extenuating relative to this?
It depends. I mean, I, you know, if it's a arms-length transaction type, you know, yes, relocation is on the seller. If, there should be no, to the extent there is relocation cost, it would be those derived by a seller, but in the, in the case of an acquisition for by eminent domain, there are certain relocation costs that are derived by the acquiring part, by the acquiring governmental entity, in this case, the city.
Okay, so the relocation costs would only be a line item relative to anything taken by eminent domain?
Yes, but sometimes you reach an agreement with somebody and relocation costs are are part of it, even, even even though you don't necessarily file, file the eminent domain paperwork, because it's, it's, yeah, it's part of the good faith negotiation. Sometimes you have an eminent domain where you reach a price with somebody and they want you to take it by a minute domain because there's a tax benefit to them, for example, on a ten thirty one exchange, having additional time to be able to find a relocation property, those are what are termed as, and they're legal, it's called friendly eminent domain proceedings, so.
And I just want to add to my other thing, one is that, like Mario said, you know, when we were quite Hatch and Bailey Building, Hatch and Bailey as a business, they were in a kind of situation that they are considering potentially moving on. So there's no relocation cost, so it gives us a little more ability to negotiate the price of the property because there's no relocation. So it does, you're right, I mean, it does give you the, give us, give us more flexibility than negotiating pricing. The other thing is interesting, I don't know what the answer is, but it's kind of interesting that recently we did so change, used to be industrial, like industrial zone for all these properties. It's been changed to residential, so and somebody, so the the commercial user, industrial use grandfather in. So I don't know how it affected the property value, so it's kind of interesting whether they actually make it more expensive or less, I don't know. But at the same time is when we get the appraiser, it's based on current use, a current zoning, which is residential zoning.
Well, it's the determination of value in an appraisal. The first step is to determine what, what is the highest and best use and irrespective, sometimes even if zoning would allow you to have another use. The appraiser would make a determination whether it would make sense to change the current use. So presumably, even with those zoning changes, the current use will remain the highest and best use for the properties.
Thank you both. Alan, can you speak to the second two actions that we're working for? The two projects, the capital project and the expansion, so that we can move all of this.
I'm getting a little echo, I didn't hear everything you said. Are you referring to the library project now?
I, I just want you to address the second actions requested, revising the project description for capital budget account. Zero nine two dash zero six two one zero five seven 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 C zero six six two. Funding for building programming phase with design options and moving that to program phase with design options and property acquisition.
Okay.
The second piece on Belt.
Yeah, that's right, the library, so I can, Mario can talk about the, the business and legal side. I just wanted to quickly, the reason why we're requesting the, the, the city and library is looking to acquire property for parking. And the, the action being requested is the utilization of existing funds in our capital budget account. We have about a little more than two million dollars in our current account. Generally, when we request capital budget is for a specific project, let's say, library expansion. And, you know, under that category, you know, we spent the design services, we said construction, and then that time we spent the land acquisition. But for this property, we want to make it very clear that we are, we are going to use that money for, the money is available to us for, for, for the purpose of acquisition as well. Just want clearly defined it for, for, for accounting purposes. So beyond that, I go leave, have Mario to respond to the other questions, the other part of questions.
Well, the city does desire to acquire a certain portion of the property at eleven Belton Avenue, which is approximately, I believe, about a quarter of an acre. Where we have been for the last five years leasing a parking lot that that's been used for patrons of the Norwalk Public Library. We, we, we desire to acquire that property for potential future expansion of the existing footprint of the library or for additional parking or other ancillary facilities servicing the library. We, we've been, the, the, the city has been, again, leasing that area for the last five years, that lease expires at the end of the month. The city has obtained a lease for, as you believe know at this point, for property, for an area for parking on an adjacent parcel that's owned by the Eagles Club. And that's a temporary, that's parking that's provided on a temporary basis to replace this parking area. But the city does desire to acquire the parking lot. We've had discussions with the owner for some period of time this year, and we have not been able to to reach a price that works for both parties. So the process here is, is for us to go through getting approval ultimately from the council to proceed with obtaining the property if necessary by eminent domain.
And in both cases, there is no incremental funding requested, no incremental expense required, it is simply adding in both cases the ability to do property acquisition with the existing funds for Clarence. Is that a correct statement?
Yes, the funding was, so the capital budget funding that's available right now, it's from two separate years. And I think one is, one time, once is a four, four hundred fifty thousand, the other one was, was about one point six million dollars. So anyway, yeah, we have, we got, the library got funding twice and the way the it's, it's for the library expansion, but it was, there's wording in it that talks about with design services. So since we're using for acquisition of property, again, typically, we, we, we have the ability to use for that purpose, but we want to make it very clear to the to the public and to the board estimate that we are intended to use this money, portion of this money for, for land acquisition. So, so this for transparency purposes.
Thank you. Any questions about this part of the resolution and required actions?
Yeah, Detroit, I, I, I have questions on the first part still, but going to this. I was surprised to see this. I thought we were done with the parking acquisition phase. I thought the common council did a great job with getting the Eagles parking lot lease set up for the going forward and you bought the, we also bought the Norwalk redevelopment building, which gave you thirty three additional spaces, so. I'm not happy, I'm not thrilled about this transaction. Mario, how much percentage is the parking lot only of the deal that was done with Alex seven years ago? Space-wise?
If you look at the property, you know, you can kind of estimate the, the, the.
Seventeen percent, the right number, I saw that in the past in other documents.
It sounds, based on just looking at it, it seems like a wrap, you know, plus minus twenty percent seems about.
So if the deal was set seven years ago, four million, whatever that number was, and you're just taking now, you're not taking the full four million that was set, right? Why are we just taking seventeen percent of the amount of the four million dollar number, which is about eight hundred?
Let, let, let me try to answer that. We've been negotiating for that small piece of property in the back. This stands for the future of expansion of the library. The parking places at the Eagles, that was just a stopgap. And for employee parking, we certainly don't want people that have physical challenges parking there and having to walk to the library. So we're looking at this piece of property here as a, help us expand the library and give us the parking that we need.
To follow up on what the mayor said, a couple of things, and maybe.
The seventeen percent of the four million dollar number.
Sure, let me, let me respond to that. With regard to the, the number you're referring to. It was a number that was an ultimate acquisition number in an option contract, in an option agreement, that was leave four million eight hundred fifty thousand. And the city had decided not And the city had decided not to. Execute that strike price in the option agreement. And so with regard to what the potential cost would be for an acquisition of the of of the parking lot area. I don't think. Taking a percentage of that number in the option agreement is the right way to do it. We are in the process of obtaining two appraisals by certified commercial appraisers. Who hold M A I just designations and, you know, I think the basis for determining the appropriate value for that. Would be, at least the starting basis would be the average of the those two appraisals.
And who's the owner of the property, Mario?
The 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 property is owned by an entity that is. Controlled by Mr. By Jason Milligan.
Okay, and so if negotiations have to go on. And we are at this situation, we have to rely on that. Is this eminent domain? Are we looking at eminent domain options for this property?
Yes, there there will be a, ultimately. As we continue through this process of meetings, ultimately, there will be a vote by the common council. Which we anticipate to be sometime at one of their September meetings to authorize us to proceed with acquiring the property. Including taking it, proceeding with taking it by eminent domain.
But I think the first thing that, the first thing is, Mario, is good faith negotiations. Once we have the authority to do, to take it by eminent domain, then we're looking at good faith negotiations. We can work with the owner of the property and see if we can't come to. An agreement.
Yes, that's correct. The, there there's a, first of all, we have been, we have engaged in good faith negotiations. The mayor has been involved directly with those. For some time throughout this year, but even after the council takes a vote for us to acquire the property and if necessary by eminent domain. We still intend to proceed with additional good faith negotiations with the owner. And then at some point, prior to six months from the date of the council's decision, we would have to. File the paperwork with the court to effectuate the eminent domain if we're unable to reach an agreement with the owner prior to that.
Thank you, mayor. Have, what, can you disclose what the last offer the city has made?
Jump off. Not not at this, not at this time, you know, it's it's.
Well, it was in the, I saw it in the paper a couple of months. I don't know if it was true or not.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what was, I don't know the number reported in the paper and, but but not at this time. I I I also, I think discussions like that are probably most appropriate to take place in eminent, with regard to. With regarding negotiations for acquisition of a property and negotiations are probably best handled in executive session. And there's a carve out within FOIA for us to do so.
Well, well, I'm just saying, I'm just telling you what I've read in the public papers. So you don't know that number is.
I I know I have, I've been negotiating on behalf of the city. I I have not, I have not reported a number as far as negotiating for the acquisition of that parking lot to 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 the press. So. I don't know if anyone else has given a statement, but I I haven't. So I really don't know.
Okay, regarding both items, what was the last time we did a eminent domain? Have you done one while you've been in? In your position in the city?
I believe there's one property where we have done an eminent domain. There's others where we've. Yeah, Ten Ten Tentito Court was one which we did acquire, I believe, by eminent domain. There's been other properties in which we've started the process. And ultimately entered, negotiated a acquisition with the property owner. For example, the Hatch and Bailey property is one. In which we started the, we we started the process and with with negotiations and ultimately were able to acquire it. There may have been others where. There would have been a friendly eminent domain. I I'd have to go back and check. I'm not sure.
And the other thing is now, with going back to the school project, there's six properties. That gets very unwieldy, I would think. Is it all or nothing? If you would have, you you can't, what if one person doesn't say, I mean.
The answer is, it's all, the answer is, it's all the, the answer is, it's all the properties. I mean. We 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 intend to acquire all of those properties. If we, we we intend to try to do so in good faith negotiations with the owners, to the extent that we're unable to achieve that. Prior to six months from the date that the council makes its decision for us to proceed with acquiring the properties. Then we would proceed with eminent domain on any of the properties. That's why we have the option. That's from a matter of public policy. That's why governmental entities such as the city have the ability to take property by eminent domain for a qualified public use.
And the other thing is, and obviously any deals that you would work out with any of these properties would be subject to environmental issues, I would imagine, right? An out clause.
We've been doing some due diligence on 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 the environmental. I'll let Alan speak to that as well.
Yeah, we have, we have authorized a face plan of environment, environmental report. Typically for for residential buildings, the worst situation. It it's underground water tanks kind of thing. So we have, they haven't completed yet. We need access to this property. So we met with some of these property owner probably like two, three weeks ago, two weeks ago. So we were requesting permission to enter the property to do the, well, environmental concern to do the report. So we are fully aware that, you know, environmental. Concerns or presence of hazardous material, it's always a component of our discussion in terms of value and order. And the course of remediation, if there's any issues and stuff like that. So. Yes, we are aware of that potential problem.
Thank you. Troy, any other comments or any comments from anybody else on board?
Now, I just don't know how we're gonna handle this voting, Ed, on these items, because I'd be perfectly honest, I'm not happy with the last, the. The last item. I don't know if you do, have to do them all at once, or are you gonna do them separately?
My understanding, I look for guidance, people who are smart and like, but since it is one single resolution. With the two action items assigned to it, that it needs to be approved. In its entirety. Tom, Mr. Mayor, if I'm correct in that assumption, please correct.
Well, I think Mario can give us a better answer on that, but if there is a problem with one of the resolutions. Or one of the parts of this, I don't think there's any problem with separating them out.
I agree with.
I'm not sure.
I I agree with the mayor that. The the agenda provides for a. As a matter of public notice, what items you're voting on, I I believe they could be separated out.
Very good. Then let's, let's do it this way. Let's first vote on item one. The revolution that's read into the record by Madam Clark earlier meeting. All in favor of the resolution?
Can I, can I just, Mr. Chairman, can I just interrupt for one moment? If you're gonna separate them out, is it possible, just to summarize the what the, what you're voting on for for the first one? And I understand you, you gave reference, but I just want to make sure it's clear on the agenda, please.
Sure, so resolution again, request special capital appropriation in the amount of two point nine million for. Public schools for the acquisition of six properties abutting to propose South Mall School and other project related purposes. All in favor of the resolution? Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution is approved. Item number two, the first action item. And that is the recommendation of the allocation of two point nine million in special capital appropriation funds. To the Norwalk Public Schools for the acquisition of six properties abutting to propose South Norwalk School. As identified here in this memo, see the attached in our agenda. And B, we recommend the reduction of two point nine million, the free balance in the Jefferson School Improvement Project. Capital budget account number zero nine one nine dash two zero five zero one zero five seven seven. C is entirely zero six one nine. All in favor of that action item, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose abstentions. That action item is approved. Action request number two has two parts to it. Part A is revise the project description for the capital budget account number zero nine two. Zero six two one zero five seven seven seven. C is entirely zero six six two. Currently, it reads funding, building, programming. That is with designer. The proposed change is funding for building program phase with design options and property acquisition. This project was approved in fiscal twenty twenty budget with a budget. About four hundred fifty thousand dollars, of which no actual have been invested to date. Part B of this action is to revise the description for the capital budget account. Number zero nine two dash zero six two one zero five seven seven seven. C is entirely zero. Currently, it reads Belden Library, Belden Avenue Library Expansion Architectural Services. The proposed change is Belden Avenue Library Expansion Architectural Services and Property Acquisition. This project was approved in fiscal year twenty twenty one with a budget of one point five seven million dollars and no actual spend to date. All in favor of these actions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or ayes opposed?
Opposed.
Troy has opposed abstentions? The action is approved with a vote of four to one. Thank you all very much. Any other conversation before we move to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Seeing none, I accept the mayor's motion to adjourn. Can I get a second? Nobody's gonna second the motion to adjourn?
But that's okay.
Thank you all very much. Have a good evening, everyone.
Good night, everyone.